Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shores, September 8th, 2020. First public hearing for town budget. Could I have a call to order, please?
Mayor Valtean Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul Schellhu.
Present.
President Pro Tem Robert Schellhu.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Feebold.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Present.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody out there that this is a virtual meeting. We are separated at least 12 feet apart. There are three of us here in council chambers and everybody else is separated. Three council members and two others are separated. We welcome you and we'd like to start with a moment of silence. We'd like to have a moment of silence for Francis Patrick Fahey, who passed away, 8/21/20, 84 years old, was the vice mayor pro tem of Juneau Beach. And we'd also like to have a moment of silence for all those who've passed away from COVID this year. And I believe we have Pastor Hunter, who will lead us in an invocation. Let's make sure we have his microphone on.
I'm muted. Am I muted?
No, you're good now, thank you.
Okay. Well, Lord, thank you for this meeting tonight, Lord, and thank you for these good men and women tonight, Lord, that are so dedicated to Lake Clark Shores and just making it a great community. We thank you for their service, we thank you for their labor. Lord, we thank you for their love, we thank you for their care. Lord, tonight, we would ask that you would just guide and direct in everything that you do. Lord, we can ask you for wisdom. You said, "If any man lack wisdom, one must ask of God." So, Lord, we pray for wisdom tonight as these men make decisions that will not only affect their life, but it will affect the lives of many others in this community. So, God, please help them tonight. May there be sweet unity. Lord, may your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. God, we pray for this dear family that lost a loved one and just passed away and just pray, Lord, that you would just be with that family in a special way. God, no one knows how to comfort like you do. You lost your son, you know how to comfort. So, God, be with them. Be with those dear people, Lord, that have passed away because of the virus. Lord, we're asking you to take away that virus from our nation, our April. So, God, we pray for that tonight. Lord, we pray that you keep these dear people safe and keep their families safe, keep the community safe. Lord, again, I pray and thank you for our police department tonight. I pray you protect them, watch over them, be with the chief in a special way. God bless the meeting tonight. We're here to pray and ask for your blessing upon it. And we'll thank you for what you're about to do now, in Jesus' name. Evening.
Pastor Hunter, thank you so much for that beautiful prayer. We want to God bless America and obviously do our pledge of allegiance. If you want to perhaps lead us, the flag's right here.
See it.
Okay, maybe we can do it.
You almost. To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate that. It's kind of difficult for us all to stand at once, but we did it.
My pleasure, I enjoyed it so much.
Thank you. So, we're starting off with our first public hearing for the town budget. And we're going to have a presentation right now by Dan Clark, our town administrator. I'll be turning it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor. The budget really hasn't changed appreciably since we had the workshop in July. The 2021 budget provided us some challenges. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting feedback, so I'm going to mute your mic. So, the challenges in the 2021 budget. General fund revenues were off an estimated 13%. That's $456,000. Garbage rates, good news. This part did change, they're only going up 10%. That's excellent news from where we were last time. General fund contribution to the CRA is up. That's a great thing for the CRA, but it shows as an expense in the general fund. The general fund pays the CRA. And the utility fund is looking at the loss of their special legislative appropriation. Next, please, Emily, thank you. So, we step back in light of losing that money, almost $800,000 between the two funds. We step back to see what our core mission was and to make sure we were protecting that core mission. Police services, we put as number one. Code compliance is number two. Utility services as number three. Permitting and business services as number four, and then general government. So, we built our budget based on that priority list. Very little capital expenditures are in the general fund. We put $6,000 in for striping because a few of our streets need some striping. There are no new vehicles in the general fund this year. And we significantly cut back on parks and recreation and streets. We also decided that it's probably not in the residents' best interests or the town's best interest to have events this fall that helped us with the budget. So, right now, there's no fall lake cleanup. There's no better than Halloween celebration. There's no loop around the lake and no holiday parade or tree lighting scheduled. General fund proposed balance, proposed budget is balanced. There's no change in the millage rate. We're holding 6.2798 for, I believe, the 10th year. The current year rollback rate would be 6.0388. And the current year taxable value was up 4.33% at $285 million. Previous year final taxable value was 274,000. Estimated $391,000 of revenue lost due to COVID-19 impacts. Most of that is in sales tax revenue. We're proposing a merit increase of 3%, and that's following the Police Department Collective Bargaining Agreement contract. And the CPI was actually a negative 0.2% this year. Garbage collection is up only 10%. And in the capital budget, we have $6,000 now for street striping. The CRA fund is a great story to tell this year. Estimated revenue from the county is $28,500. Estimated revenue from the town is $37,400, with planned expenditures right at $50,000. And that's a beautification program and a business incentive project. The estimated carryforward at the end of the year will be $3,000. The utility fund is an unbalanced budget, and that's because we have borrowed money for construction projects in the past that we are now spending this year. So, again, we're looking at a proposed 3% salary increase. No change in staffing, no change in benefits, health insurance or retirement specifically. No new debt is proposed, and the transfer to the general fund is remaining at $220,000. The utility fund new initiatives this year. Finish and implement the rate study. Close the agreement with Mar-a-Lago K for those 620 new customers. Build a new 12-inch water main. As you may remember, we got $125,000 grant from Palm Beach County, CDBG money for that 12-inch water main and to construct the new utility admin building. Capital budget for the utility fund includes two newly leased vehicles, an upgrade of two lift stations, the Lawrence Road 12-inch water line and the new admin building. Any questions on the budget? Sorry, I'm getting there. Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any council comments on the presentation so far? If so, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you. I see no hands raised. Okay, we're going to go to the audience comments. And, Mr. Clark, could you tell us whether we have any emailed questions or comments?
We have one question that came up. And it's, "How unbalanced is the utility budget from borrowed money?" And roughly, it's a million dollars.
Okay. Or any other written or verbal questions? I guess we can ask now, if there's any verbal questions from the audience.
We have no hands up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, sounds like that's good. So, that leads to a motion for adjournment from anyone?
Don't move.
It's seconded. Seconded by Mr. Feebold. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Okay, well, that ends our first meeting of the night. Our second meeting is the Lake Clark Shores Community Redevelopment Agency, September 8th, 2020. Agenda is in front of everybody. Do we have a call to order? Roll call? I'm calling it to order, actually. We have a roll call.
Valtean Rodriguez, Chairman.
Here.
Paul Schellhu, Vice Chairman.
Present.
Robert Schellhu, Commissioner.
Here.
Gregory Feebold, Commissioner.
Here.
Albert Pavone, Commissioner.
Here.
Thank you for being here. This is a public hearing. And we're going to have the presentation of the CRA budget by Mr. Clark.
So, repeating what I said earlier. And again, I'm getting terrible feedback. The CRA is in great shape. We had started the program at $28.6 million was the estimated value within the CRA. This year, it's $31 million. So, in a three-year period of time, we've seen it grow significantly. And that's just awesome. We like the investment that's being made. We like to think that the programs that we've put in place are continuing to help encourage people to move into our CRA. So, this year, we're proposing contributions from the county at $28,500. That will change if they change their millage rate, but right now, it's assuming the millage rate stays the same. $37,446 from the town of Lake Clark Shores and about $1,000 in interest income. Expenses are proposed to be $10,000 for a consulting financial professional. Business development incentive project of $50,000 and $4,000 for education. We're still trying to get closed on our certifications as CRA executives. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions?
No.
I don't see any hands. I just, one quick question. The Forest Hill Boulevard median improvement, $20,000 budget. Could you briefly just tell us what do you think that will entail?
That was this year's expenditure, and we redid most of the medians along Forest Hill Boulevard.
Okay. And when you say redid, new foliage and?
Correct.
Okay.
Some instances, new irrigation, new foliage, reconfigure of some of the medians.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any audience comments this time?
We do not have any hands raised or any questions.
Thank you, no emailed questions. And the commission had no further comments. If you do, raise your hand. Now, we'll do an adjournment of the public hearing portion of the agenda. And I need someone to approve Resolution 2020. Okay, thank you. That was Vice Mayor Paul Schellhu moving and Councilmember Bob Schellhu seconding the approval of Resolution 2020-03. All those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous. Great, now we have an approval of the agenda. Who's by?
Second.
Free Board. Seconded by Paul Schellhu, all those in favor? And my approval of the consent agenda was listed here.
Second.
Was moved. Motion was made by Bob Schellhu, seconded by Paul Schellhu, all those in favor say aye. Any new business? None. So, it appears we have no new business for our CRA meeting tonight. One last chance for audience comments, email, written or verbal. Any hands?
No, nothing.
Nope, nothing tonight, okay. Any commissioners have additional comments? See no hands? Okay, then I mean, motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Seconded?
Some of.
One of them did. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Okay, now we're going to move right into our regular agenda. Want to call to order the Town of Lake Clark Shores Virtual Town Council Meeting, September 8th, 2020. Could I have roll call, please?
Mayor Valtean Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul Schellhu.
Present.
President Pro Tem Robert Schellhu.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Feebold.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Here.
For anyone out there who wasn't here earlier, we already did a moment of silence. And we had an invocation by Pastor Hunter. The moment of silence was for Francis Patrick Fahey, who is 84 years old, Vice Mayor Pro Tem of Juneau Beach, who passed away on August 21st. We've already done our pledge of allegiance, so can I have a motion to approve our agenda? All those in favor?
Second.
I mean, second. And then all those in favor? Okay, we have a lot of large consent agenda.
Some of.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Consent agenda has been approved. We have a presentation by Terry Gibson, Septic to Sura presentation by American Water Security Project.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize, I can't figure out my video, so I'm going to. We're not going to have a face to the name, but very sorry about that. But I'm glad you all can hear me and I look forward to meeting you in person. I'm sorry in these strange times that we're not getting to meet face to face. But briefly, I am Terry Gibson. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the American Water Security Project. We're a national organization that works on, works toward the optimal treatment recycling of wastewater and stormwater. I happen to be from the area. I grew up on Washington Road, just north of Forest Hill. I've been recreating on Lake Clark and the Lake Worth Lagoon since the late 1970s. I'm a Cardinal Newman High School graduate. Two of our team live in the town. Magali Fuentes is our project manager. And Dr. Nicole Kirchhoff, who is a legendary marine biologist, is also a resident, and she's a board member. So, you know, we very much have a vested interest in what we think you all are trying to do there. And we really commend the town for recognizing the importance of Septic to Sura conversions. I spoke with Mr. Clark briefly, and I looked forward to a longer conversation last week, and I did not realize what a Herculean task you have before you. And we would love to help you. Our organization worked very hard on the Clean Waterways Act. In the legislative session the past two years, we thought we had all the money in spades to help towns like Lake Clark Shores move forward. Unfortunately, COVID happened, and the governor vetoed many of the, you know, the special budget requests. However, there's a lot of different ways to, there's a lot of different funding opportunities out there. We know them well, and things are going to look better and better as we get away from COVID, hopefully, and move forward to, you know, move forward with a more normal budget cycle. Let me see here. I want to really get to the funding solutions as soon as possible, but I don't think we can really get there without talking about the cost of inaction. And I assume I'm speaking to more than just the, not just the board or the council members tonight, but to the audience as well. But we work on these things all over the country and everywhere, every time, there's some pushback due to the perceived costs. Well, the costs are, you know, if you can get creative, you can make this pretty affordable to your constituents, but the costs of inaction are completely unaffordable. So, the problems that you're having here related to septic tank effluence is that, you know, nitrogen and phosphorus pollution from wastewater is super biologically available to harmful algal blooms and exotic plant species. It also transfers pathogens directly into the groundwater and the surf water, surface water, dangerous pathogens, pathogens that are threats to human health. Costs you recreational opportunities. It hurts your property values, it hurts your tourism, and it challenges recruitment for industry if that's what you're after. Next slide, please. So, our team has done studies on wastewater pollution all around the state and all around the nation. And basically, Lake Clark Shores has what's called the Myaca soil. It's typical of anywhere. It's sand with a little bit of dirt mixed in it. So, Lake Clark Shores is built on, you know, sandy low-lying geology. These highly transmissive soils allow rapid migration of sewage effluence into ground and surface waters. Pathogens also pass through the soil into ground and surface waters easily. And I'm going to say this about five times tonight. Nutrients from septic tank pollution provides superfoods for harmful algal blooms, as we call them, habs, and for exotic invasive vegetation that you're dealing with constantly through contractors and spring, which has its own suite of problems. And these habs and pathogens threaten the health of people and wildlife. Sorry, you know, we, Lake Clark Shores tested positive for harmful cyanobacteria in 2016, and there is the ongoing hyacinth problem as a result of sewage pollution. Your waters that fish them regularly are choked over with undesirable vegetation. And your visitors and your residents are left to make sure their pets and families, you know, keep our distance from the harmful algal blooms, which are often toxic. I live now in Martin County and Jensen Beach, and three of my friends in the last several years have lost dogs that consume cyanobacteria, species of harmful algae on Treasure Coast. There's a growing body of evidence that the toxins in cyanobacteria can lead to liver and brain diseases in humans as well. Next slide, please. The problem is going to get worse before it's going to get better. Over the past several years, you know, we've had record rainfall events during the rainy season. I think we had 28 inches last August. And we didn't even have a hurricane, or Dorian just missed us. We are also having, we've also more years than not had record heat during the summer months. But really, it's the, in terms of the infrastructure, it's the volume of precipitation's problem. These heavier, extreme, more frequent precipitation events, they just flush out those septic tanks into the groundwater and on into the surface water. And so, you know, as Mr. Clark is an engineer, I understand, and y'all think about how to find the money and think about how to design these projects. Think about them as, making them as resilient as possible. Think about how they can be, you know, they can avoid what's called inflow and infiltration from other sources of water that would cause you to do massive sewage dumps. You know, think about things volumetrically, think about growth. Think about, make sure that, you know, if you're only going to make this investment, you make it once for 30 or 50 years, and you don't have to keep going back and improving your system because things are getting wetter, more and more people are living there. Next slide, please. Wait, go back a couple. If we don't do the, I mean, this is what we're trying to protect. You know, the very reasons why we all live in South Florida. It's the fishing and other outdoor recreation. It's the, you know, the home market, it's a solid investment. It's the natural areas, it's the wildlife. It's, you know, for me and my team, it's watching our kids grow up in the same waters as we did, yet now, we're super worried about their safety in and around those waters. We got to protect, we've got to do these things for the sake of natural areas, essential habitat, wildlife, recreation, home prices, community and culture, animal and human health. And I want to back up to the home prices for a minute. As you all probably know, on St. Lucie River, we chronically have these harmful algal blooms. What happens is the cora opens Lake of Ychoby on us, but we have so many septic tanks in the system. When the algae comes from Lake of Ychoby, they hit the nutrients from the sewage, and it just explodes. I've had to evacuate my family, too, out of the last four years, and I have a four-year-old. And so, the Martin County Realtors Association, and I think another Realtors Association over on the West Coast that suffers similar problems routinely, they did a study on water quality and home prices, and it shows that as the water quality declines, so do the home values. And I don't think I have to tell you all what that means to your tax base and your ability to provide goods and services to your constituents. So, this is, you know, really basic necessities. You just inherited a town that's been around for a long time before anybody thought about master wastewater collection systems. My dad used to hunt out there. So, anyway, next slide. There are a great deal of funding opportunities out there. So, and we've worked on almost all of them. We lobbied the state and federal legislatures, the appropriators, to increase funding across a whole suite of innovative programs. They include the NOAA Coastal Planning Initiative, the Environmental Protection Agency, the WIFIA Fund, the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, which is one of my favorites. It's a low-interest loan that encourages, you know, folks like you all to find creative ways to cobble together different types of funding that can make it affordable for the town and for your citizens. There's the pre-risk mitigation grants, you know, I would think as much flooding issues if you have a flooding, you'd be eligible for those. Those high-risk mitigation grants, I would think you'd be eligible for those. There are DEP, Public Assistance Grants, and of course, the Clean Water State Revolving Funds. And I want to stop there for a second because I know you all upset you a lot. You didn't get your special budget request. But we did some things that were really smart this year in the legislature, and they should be commended. One of the things they did was they created a specific fund for wastewater infrastructure so that we don't have to go do this the old-fashioned way where everybody puts in a special request and you hope you get it. And generally, it becomes political, and the people with the gavel and the most power, they are able to bring home the bacon to their constituents and other people lose out, which isn't what happened this year. COVID is what happened to yours project, but it happens. This new wastewater granting program is much more equitable. It gives special considerations to small towns like yours. It gives special considerations to small towns like yours that whose wastewater problems impact more than one water body and in fact, impact, you know, an impaired water body, the Lake Worth Lagoon. Your all's water runs out, the Lake Worth spillway, and I think the Boynton spillway, if I remember correctly. I've caught about a million snook below that spillway. But as that water runs out, it's impacting the Snook Islands and all these places. We've made all these investments, tremendous investments in improving Lake Worth Lagoon. And seagrasses and bivalves and salmoysters, they just can't possibly live there. But again, the good news is, is that this is set up to help small towns like Lake Clark Shores and make the system more equitable. And I don't think you're going to see a repeat of this unless COVID just really devastates the state budget. I think things will get better, if not in 2021, at least in 2022. There are bonds. we can introduce you all to various, um, companies that issue bonds and, and are willing to work creatively to, to put funding packages together that could have all of these put together or a couple of them, whatever, whatever caters best to your needs. And at the same time, we're constantly telling stories like the story of Lake Clark Shores to, to state and federal appropriators. Like we've got, these people need help. It's really expensive to do this stuff. Um, and it's not going to get any cheaper. It's going to get much more expensive. So again, we're working with, um, federal, um, federal and state appropriators to try to increase funding and all these pots of money. We're also asking for a COVID-19 package that would include wastewater and water infrastructure in general. We think it's a good idea to put people back to work doing important, um, uh, infrastructure projects that also protect our economy and ecology. We don't think it's a good idea to keep printing out, printing money and handing it out. We need to reinvest in the equity and equitability of communities. And we're cautiously optimistic that in the next 12 months, we might see a major COVID-19 water infrastructure package that y'all could, that would benefit y'all. Um, we've also informed national reports on climate change. Most recently, the Select Committee on the Climate Crisis, we informed their, their water and wastewater, um, infrastructure chapter of 155, or sorry, 500 page report. Where again, people, they, one of their major priorities was to help coastal towns and low line communities to fix your wastewater systems because if you don't, you don't have resilience. You have harmful algal blooms. You have toxic water. So it's a, it's a, it's becoming more and more a priority within Congress and we're very, very proud of that work. But we want to bring it home. We aren't doing this for ourselves. Next, next slide, please. There, there are models that work and rather than Martin County, um, we've got a great model. We've got a 10 year plan to get everybody off septic tanks. My only complaint about is that it's voluntary. But this community understands, uh, as many other do up and down, up and down the coast here. Basically every, um, municipality and county along the Indian River Lagoon here is, is making these investments. We're in, 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 in trying to figure out, you know, how to finance them the same way y'all are. And one of my favorites and not to be, you know, play favorites is, is Martin County. And they've done all the work for the residents. They've figured out how to keep it as cost effective as possible. They, they bring the financing and all you have to do is sign the papers. Um, so, um, I mean, I could go on and on about this program, but they've reached out to every feasible imaginable, um, institution that would, would help cost share this stuff. And they continue to do so. I wrote a letter of support the other day for a major grant to the DEP for Martin County. And they're also partnering with a, a great group called the Solar Energy Loan Fund. This run by my old friend Doug Coward, who was the, um, the chair of, uh, the St. Lucie County Commission, I think twice and termed out after 12 years. They primarily provide low interest on loans for, for solar for people with marginal credit. But they've extended that to, um, to, uh, people that wanted to do septic to sewer conversions. And it's generally less than 5% or even lower. So, you know, there are ways to make this not a nominal, but an affordable, um, uh, fee for something you just have to do anyway, because we can't continue to live like this. Next slide, please. And we, we like to work in partnerships with, with towns like yours. We can do things for y'all like constituent education. Uh, I can go talk to, to fishermen as a fisherman. I'm, I'm the former fishing editor of Outdoor Life and former, former editor at Florida Sportsman and a number of other magazines. We know everybody that, that water skis on, on your waters. Um, we can explain in layman's terms why sewage pollution is so dangerous. We can help you with the state and federal agency outreach, the government outreach. Um, if you need to do more research to prove that to your constituents, we have the best technology in the world. We can literally look at the stabilisatives and the nitrogen and tell you whether it came from the rear end of an iguana or from a person. We literally can. Um, you know, we, we provide funding advice and funder pairing and then, you know, it's what we found most of all with small towns is that, um, most of y'all don't have a grant writer or at least a grant writer with experience in these arenas. And we can write the grants for you and we can do the reporting for you to save valuable staff time. In most cases, we already have a strong rapport with the people we'd be submitting these grants and reports to. So in short, you know, we're here to help. I mean, this is our home too. And, and, um, you know, we're really proud of you guys for wanting to address these problems and these problems. And the last thing I ask is, you know, I know it's hard for us to meet in person, but we'd love to meet with you, Mr. Clark and Mr. Mayor and, um, anybody else that, um, you know, in person or at least in Zoom person, um, to have a longer conversation about this stuff. Made a lot of assumptions here about where you are and your thinking, but, um, but again, we're here to help. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them. And if constituents have any, any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your presentation. Uh, there may be some council members here who have some questions. If you do, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. I don't see the hands raised. I, I think the presentation was extremely informative, um, and we actually have quite a problem here in our towns, you know. Um, okay, uh, any, do we have any questions, Dan, that have come in from any viewers?
Uh, we have one, one hand raised. That would be Tim Dotry.
I, we can't hear you, Dan.
Sorry, hang on.
All right, there we go. We have one hand raised and that would be Tim Dotry.
Uh, please go ahead, Mr. Dotry.
Tim, it says you're self muted.
About now.
Gotcha.
You got me now? Okay, so I've got a question about, um, this company right here. What would be a typical amount in a percentage basis that they would be able to obtain from all the sources that he's mentioned through grant writing or funding that does not include, uh, resident participation? What percentages of a total cost of building out a system like this could be, um, brought from outside funding sources to help us with the cost?
Mr. Dotry, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
No, no, Mr. Gibson, please, if you can address that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So first of all, we're not a company. We're, we're a nonprofit. Um, we do provide these services for, for a very small fee, but we're, um, you know, there's nobody really in the space doing this. That's, um, that's, you know, not trying to upsell you or anything else. Um, you know, sometimes it works. We take a small percentage of a grant. Sometimes we, you know, we take a small fee for, for managing a grant or a loan or something like that.
Well, that's, that's not what I meant. What I meant was what percentage of a total cost build out of a sewer system for Lake Clark Shores? Based on your experience, we could get funding from outside sources and not rely on residents to pay for the build out of the system. Um, and I, I'm not holding you to a number, but what could we generally look for, uh, helping us out to build out the system? What percentage of the whole total build out could we look at?
You know, it is highly variable, but I think it's better to set for the, for the town leadership to set a goal for the maximum that, that, that the, that the residents would have to pay. Um, you know, it might be $20, it might be a hundred dollars, something like that and work towards that goal.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm asking. What sort of grants and outside funding that we would go after? What percentage of a build out based on your experience working in this as an expert, could we look, what percentage of the build out could we look at from outside sources of, of, um, funding? That's, and I'm not holding you to it. Generally, a, a municipality of our size, the amount of residents we've got and amount of septic tanks, what percentage could we look at from a build out? That's what I'm looking at. You know, a bottom line number, a 10%, 20%, 5%, less than five, you tell me. I, I don't know. I'm not holding you to it.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, I haven't done a deep dive with, you know, this is really our, our first conversation in the town, other than I had a short conversation with Mr. Clark the other day. You know, so you really have to look at this and crunch the numbers, but I will tell you that, that there, just about every program that I'm aware of, given the size of the town and given, uh, you know, the, the sensitivity of the ecosystems around it, given the age of the town, um, that you'd be pretty well positioned, you know, you're going to have to cost share some of it. There's no doubt about it. Some of these, most of these grants require, or loans require some sort of skin in the game. So Mr. Dotry, I don't, I'm not ducking your question, but I think you could be in a very, very favorable position where, um, the town isn't floating most of the bill. Or at least not holding it.
I was, I was just looking for a number. Like I said, I was just, I was not.
I can't do that. I mean, I, I would have, that would take so much number crunching.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Gibson and, and Mr. Dotry. I appreciate the question too. I think, Mr. Dotry, that'd be a good thing for you to maybe follow up with, uh, Mr. Gibson at some point.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, you're very familiar with this. I think the presentation was really great. It's a good start. I think the point was to know what you did, and I think we learned a lot about what your organization can do and educate us on because we are a town that does need help in this area. Um, so thank you. Were there any other questions for Mr. Gibson?
And I just, I forgot to share my contact info on the, on the PowerPoint, but my email is T Gibson, T G I B as in boy, S A N, at AWSproject.org.
Okay.
We certainly don't mind you sharing that. Uh, you know, I'm happy to, to answer the questions that down to whatever specificity we can point, you know, Mr. Dotry and your other residents. Um, it's just hard to say until we have more in-depth conversations.
Thank you. That, the, um, the PowerPoint that you showed us, can you share that with us?
Oh, yes, sir. It's yours. It's public record and Emily had it.
Oh, we have that. Okay. I wasn't sure if you were showing it to us, Emily. Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate your time tonight and it was very good, uh, talking to you. And I'm so glad that so many people in your organization are so connected to our town. That's really nice. We are, um, we're glad that you are, you have a particular interest in Lake Clark Shores.
Good luck, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we're moving along to, um, our quasi judicial proceedings, which we have none. Uh, we have no public hearing. And we do have unfinished business from the last town council meeting. It was the collective bargaining agreement between our town, County Lake Clark Shores and the Palm Beach County Police and Naval Association. Um, so I believe this was tabled at the request of Vice Mayor Paul Chauhoob, um, to get further clarification. And I just want to find out from Paul Chauhoob or whomever, whether we should, can move on with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the vast majority of the issues and questions I had were answered by our uh, labor attorney. And ultimately, a couple of things. One, it was alluded to that the policeman bill of rights had anything or something to do with the agreement. It has nothing to do with the agreement. It's not, it's apples and oranges. So wanted to state that. Secondly, the issues I have apparently relate to property rights that are created by union laws and aren't specific to, uh, the police or any unions. It's all unions that are, are like that. So there are some issues that maybe we can work out down the road, but at the end of the day, we don't approve this one. The old one just continues to run forward. And, uh, it's a three-year term. So I don't have any further issues with it. The issues I have, I can't, nor can we deal with at this time, which is unfortunate, but it is the way it is, the way the property rights laws are apparently developed, we're quite limited in what we can do from the perspective with the issues that I had. So I don't have any objections to the collective bargaining agreement that's been negotiated over the course of what, Dan, 11, 12 months now? Something like that. So if we want to vote on it or, uh, move to approve it, we can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, collective bargaining agreement to the County Lake Clark Shores and Palm Beach County Police and Naval Association.
So moved.
Okay, just for the record, uh, that was Greg Freebold making the motion seconded by Robert Chauhoob. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it has passed unanimously. Thank you. Um, our new business is the first reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero two, which pertains to solid waste. Um, did I have Mary read it, please?
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, repealing in its entirety, Chapter 46, solid waste of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Lake Clark Shores, creating a new Chapter 46, solid waste to provide for definitions, deposit of waste, mandatory service, administrative procedures, enforcement, title to waste, containers, pre-collection procedures, collection schedule, single family or two-family dwellings, multiple family dwellings, commercial, industrial and institutional establishments, bulk and vegetative waste, recycling charges, rates and fees, private collectors and actual generators of solid waste, sunken containers, special waste disposal situations, parking lots, collection during declared emergency, composting prohibited activities and construction and demolition, C and D debris collection and disposal, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause and effective date and for other purposes.
So moved. Second.
Okay. So for the record, that was Robert Chauhoob, seconded by Greg Freebold, and I'm getting echo from somebody. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we have a discussion on opening town playgrounds. Paul, could you mute? Okay, that's better. Um, so the question's become, should we reopen our town playgrounds and parks? Uh, being that, uh, it's now authorized by Palm Beach County and the state of Florida to do so. Specifically, the question for debate tonight among the council members is, should we open the pavilion? Should we open basketball courts? Should we open the recreational areas for children? Um, the tennis courts have been opened, um, playing at full capacity. Should we open the bathroom that's located, uh, at the tennis court? We have reopened the water, I believe in ice already. Um, water, that's correct. Should we, uh, go into a procedure of sanitization of these areas, including the other parks that we have? What will the cost be? And this was all precipitated on, um, Census Track 43, which we have in front of us now that shows an uptick, um, as of, I think it was as of last week, but I'm not sure if it's been updated, uh, showing, um, that in our census track, there's been more positives than our, that the health department, I believe, is comfortable with. Um, Mr. Clark, do we know the date of these statistics?
This was for the week 20, uh, August 21 through August 27. The new data will be out tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. So, um, so I'm opening this up. I talked to, um, Mr. Clark about asking him to open up areas. We've, I've had a lot of residents personally ask, hey, can I go back to the park? Um, can I, you know, it was social distancing. Can we use the pavilion? Can we use the bathroom? Uh, can our children come out to play? I mean, everybody's sort of gotten cabin fever. So I had six inquiries in the last two weeks about that and, uh, I said I'd like to talk to Mr. Clark and then I did, and I'd like to open it for discussion. I think it's a council decision, um, given the ramifications. Um, and I think it's something that we should think through before we do it. Um, so I would like to have anybody pipe in their opinion, and I do have a hand by our Vice Mayor Paul Chauhoob. We'll follow that by his father, Robert Chauhoob. We'll see what, whether father agrees with son and then, uh, any other council member who would like to pipe in. I really appreciate the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, like you, had multiple residents approach me about this topic over the last couple of weeks. Um, and ultimately, everybody wants to get back. Prior to meeting with Dan, which was, I believe, on the day or a couple of days after he received this, or I should say, figured this out, I was in favor of reopening, and the question really for me was, to what extent can we or can we not sanitize? I don't believe that we can do it on the level of Palm Beach County. We don't have really the, the resources to do that, which is twice a day. I think based on my discussions, at best, maybe we could do it five days. Then, of course, you can always just put out the sign that says, play at your own risk, and the county's even prepared signage for us in that regard. Then I met with Dan, and we talked about this specific diagram and data. And I don't want to speak for Dan, but essentially, who, the Department of Health called you? Is that correct? So if he gets a call from the Department of Health saying, you guys are in a hot zone, while there's a lot of areas where the cases are going down, we're in such a hot zone that they wanted to bring in a testing facility, mobile testing COVID facility, which is coming to the town tomorrow. So when the health department is telling us that we're in a hot zone compared to the rest of the county, that is concerning to me despite where, where the county is, because we have to really just worry about who's in our area and our residents. I was hopeful that today we would have received updated data, and maybe that would have shown that we were no longer a hot zone, and cases have gone down. By comparison, we apparently are going to receive that tomorrow. So it's my thought now that before, when I was four, just let's go ahead and open them. We get this data. It doesn't seem like a prudent decision or a good decision for us to just, knowing that we're in a hot zone, knowing that the health department's called us and said, there's a problem in your area, such that we need to put an additional testing mobile facility. I don't believe that those two things go hand in hand with, let's reopen the parks right now and make that decision on opening today. What I would like to see, after hearing from everybody else, or condition on hearing from everyone else, is that we play this on a week-by-week basis, ideally, when we're no longer in what's being categorized as this hot zone. And I would like to hear from Dan's perspective, or maybe we can contact the health department. We might even be able to do it on Wednesday when we get the new data. But right now, when we're being told that we're a hot zone, I just don't think it's prudent that we open up the parks at this time, but I don't want it to be a, we don't open it for a month or two months. This really should be a fluid situation, once we're no longer in this hot zone categorization by the health department. You know, we opened the parks up, and I'm fine with just signs. I'm fine with the five days a week, once a day, to the extent we can afford it. It does take a lot of time, and it is an outdoor park, but I'm welcome to listening to what everybody else has to say and going from there, but that's my position on the, on the issue.
Thank you, Robert Chau Who. Would you share your position?
The, Dan, you put this, everybody sees what you have up here, correct? Can you please explain to them what twenty-four to sixty means, and the arrow going up? I think that would be a starting point, please.
So, um, the very light green area on the right side of the screen is Census Track forty-three. That basically is twice the size of Lake Clark Shores. We're a little over one square mile. That Census Track is one point nine square miles. We are the bulk of the population within that Census Track. Down in the table, Census Track forty-three is highlighted, and under class, it says twenty-four to sixty. That is twenty-four to sixty new cases a week that are showing up in our Census Track of COVID nineteen. So clearly, and the, the red arrow on change means that that number grew over last week. So clearly, as the Vice Mayor said, these numbers indicate that it's, it's a very hotspot right now. The twenty-four to sixty is the highest category that the health department is putting out on a weekly basis. So, we're, we're as hot as they have designations for at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate that clarification. I wanted to make sure that the audience appreciated what they, the chart had suggested. When the, I believe it was either the Palm Beach County League of Cities, or it was the Board of County Commissioners, made a suggested sign that, and I'm paraphrasing, use at your own risk. I think that is probably the, the better way to go, in my opinion, rather than attempting to sanitize. I think once you undertake the responsibility to do any type of sanitation, now you're holding yourself out to a standard or to a level of, of performance I think is going to subject us to, becomes problematic if we attempted and didn't do a very good job. So I also want to appreciate the fact that when I asked for this up, updated information, we're going to receive some more updated information tomorrow. Let's also be mindful that we have a meeting on September twenty-second, which is basically just two weeks from now, that we can revisit this issue. I welcome the opportunity to hear the, the other comments from the other council members, but I think we owe a fiduciary responsibility to our neighbors to be as transparent as we possibly can. And while I can appreciate the fact that we have cabin fever, we also have an obligation to our neighbors. Let's not do anything stupid, and they need to know that we are in a hotbed, and, you know, twenty-four to sixty cases every week. That, that's something that I think that everybody is going to. Let's, let us be criticized for being over cautious, rather than be criticized for not doing enough.
Thank you, Robert Chau Who. Albert Pavone, would you mind speaking, or do you have any comments?
No, I mean, my take on it, if we, if we can afford it, I would like to see the daily cleaning for five days a week. I think the, the way I look at it is for the mental health of the kids. I mean, we're talking about the park. I think parents should do it at their own risk. As more and more things open up, every, every zone's going to be spiking up. If the parent doesn't feel comfortable, or, or the person feel comfortable using the parks, then they just don't go. If they do feel comfortable, then, you know, they're just understanding they're going at their own risk, knowing that everything is spiking up around them. So my take is, I don't know how much longer we could keep it locked up before, and I get, I get a lot of parents with kids that ask me, when's it going to open up? I think if they're willing to go out there, or if they're willing to take the risk, I, I don't see why we could stop them, you know? That's my take.
I would just add that the playground is, the, the parks are open. The playground equipment is what's closed, and the pavilion.
Yes, yeah. But the questions I've been getting more on the playground, when, when, you know, especially with like the virtual school, and the kids just aren't able to go outside. I mean, we don't have sidewalks, or it's too dangerous to go playing that close to the road. I think that's why I get the question the most. And I understand that we are in a hot zone. So I'm just saying, if the parent wants to risk it, the parent feels comfortable with doing it, then it's completely up to them. I think we need to have the proper signs everywhere that says, you know, enjoy at your own risk.
Okay, Greg Freebold, would you mind giving us your opinion?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Clark, how often has the health department been providing you with this information?
Weekly.
Weekly, okay. So we're off track, or is Wednesday the day the data comes out?
I, I expected it today, but I was told because of the holiday, the gentleman that does the analysis, I guess, is running late, and we won't get it till tomorrow.
Okay. I don't think we have the resources to clean five days a week, twice a day. Just with staff alone, utility department, those guys are busy with a lot of other projects that are going on. I know we're moving into Phase Two in Palm Beach County, which is great. I think everybody's essential. However, I agree with President Protem Chau Who. I'd rather be criticized for being over cautious for the children's sake than under cautious, and I think that we will have two more weeks of information. We have two meetings this month. So if we're talking about fourteen additional days here that we can hang on a little bit longer and just see where our numbers are going, my feeling is that that's the proper thing to do. So, and I agree with if the children are going to be in a, just like with the, the yard sale, if you're going to go and you're going to subject yourself to that, that's on you. However, I think two weeks is a small amount of time. This is only been six months that we've been going through this. I know it's terrible, but we're talking two more weeks here for the safety of our neighbors who are children and have a bright future ahead of them. I, I, I still think there's a lot of unknown things about this virus. So that's my take.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Freebold. You mute your speaker, your microphone. Thank you. Well, this is why we have a town council. First of all, I think clearly, this type of decision should not be made by a town manager or a county manager, or, or something like that. I think these types of decisions should be made by council members. Secondly, I, I, you could debate this to the end of time. I mean, yes, we take risks every day. We go to Publix, we go to gas stations, we get on airplanes. You know, some people tell other people, don't go to the park, go, go to another park. I mean, does that solve the problem? I've been hearing that one over and over again. In fact, some people have been told that by people here, you should go somewhere else. Don't worry about our park. Well, that doesn't solve it. But I tend to agree that it doesn't seem to be a rush if we are meeting in two weeks again. I think we should look at revised data. I mean, this data's not perfect, however. You know, what if Lake Clark Shores really is not on the uptick, and I know there will be no way of knowing from this data, because it includes a big portion of unincorporated Palm Beach County, a big portion of Lake Worth, and perhaps even parts of West Palm Beach are in this, from what I'm looking at, because I know that the houses near Dreher Park South are part of West Palm Beach. So it's not just a Lake Clark Shores problem. But I tell you what, tomorrow is free testing. We only have fifty people come last June fifteenth when we had it. I will be there tomorrow morning, first in line, and I hope all of you in here will, too, because that's how we're going to know if Lake Clark Shores has a problem. Go test. It is invasive, but it can be done. And, and I'm glad that they finally offered us the testing again here, and I, I got my results back in three days. And, uh, you know, I'll have my entire family there tomorrow. But do I have a motion to table this perhaps for two weeks?
Sure.
Make a motion to Terry Wood till the, uh, September twenty-second, beauty.
Okay.
Second.
A second, second by Robert Chau Who. All those in favor?
Discuss it.
There's no discussion on the motion to table.
Okay, there's no discussion on motion to table, sorry. But I'll let you discuss all of that in a few minutes.
Hold on. Well, we still need to vote on a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so there was a motion table that's been.
Also, can I talk about it before we do that, Charlie? Was it me talking before we voted on a motion?
Well, just under the Robert rules, there isn't, but I mean, if I'm following the Robert rules, you're not allowed to.
Is that right, Charlie?
Yes. Robert rules provides that the motion to the table, there is no discussion. You vote on whether you're tabling or not. But it's certainly up to the, to the mayor and the rest of the council as to whether or not they want to have additional input.
I, I have no problem with additional input, so go ahead.
The only reason, and I would like to know what everybody else thinks, the only reason I came, I'm sitting here telling you, I don't think we should open the parks right now, is because of this data. Data that was only, came to our attention specifically because the health department called us and said, hey, you guys are in a hot zone. Barring that information, I would have no reason to sit here and say, we shouldn't open the parks. In fact, we probably would have opened the parks already by now. So, if not, I certainly would have been moving to do that today. So, if we're no longer a hot zone, to me, that's the only data that matters. I'm not going to sit here and say we need to have zero cases. I'm not going to come up with some arbitrary percentage, or the numbers need to take this. We just no longer need to be considered by the health department as a hot zone when they're telling us, hey, this is the issue. So if that's one week from now, then fine, we should open the parks. If that's two weeks from now, then we should open the parks. If that's three weeks from now, we should open the parks. But literally, that information, we figured it out, what, a week ago? So, I don't see a need to table it. I don't see a need to have another discussion about it unless everybody else does. But basically, if we're not in a hot zone anymore, where we're sitting here at the highest risk, whatever, the highest number, twenty-four to sixty, then we open. And then the real discussion is, do we do, well, first of all, the signs should always be there, regardless if we're cleaning or not. There's no liability created. You, good luck to the attorney that can prove that we didn't properly sanitize, and that's how it happened. Good luck. So, you know, we put the signs up, and then we just decide, and we can certainly decide that today, whether or not we want to clean five days a week, or however many days, or not at all. And then as soon as the numbers drop, we're not in the hot zone, we reopen the parks. Because let's say the data comes in on Wednesday. We wait two weeks to talk about the data that's two weeks old? For what purpose? Again, the purpose would be if someone on the council says, well, the data needs to show these specific things, and blah, blah, blah. But right now, we're just in the hottest zone. We drop out of the zone. I have no problem opening the parks. I wouldn't have a logical reason to not open the parks. I couldn't figure out a solid argument that I would love to stand by, to not open the parks. So that's my position. I don't want to table it. I want to have it, I want to discuss it now. We give Dan the authority to do what he needs to do to open the parks when we're no longer in this hot zone category. And all we need to decide is if you want to spend the resources on five days a week cleaning, or put the signs up, or we do both.
Well, okay, so we are in an interesting procedural stance. We have a seconded motion to table, and then we had sounds like an attempt to want to change that motion or opposition to the motion.
Strike it down, yeah.
Paul, would you turn off your?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just make a comment here as well. I don't know what the stat means. I really don't. I mean, it has a gigantic area that includes Lake Clark Shores. It's in a hot uptick area. You know, the whole state of Florida is in a hot uptick area compared to other states. I just don't know what that means. I would be nice if we had more information. Be nice if we knew more about our own town as opposed to three thousand or four thousand, two thousand people in other areas of the county who are included in the same area. This data is two weeks old. If the data comes back tomorrow and it's better, does that mean we automatically open as council? Do we just leave it up to Dan? You know, do you want to have more control than other cities have? I mean, other cities just let their town administrator deal with these issues. Um, you know, that, that's kind of why we're here on this topic, but there's a motion that was seconded. I, I think I have to call it for a vote, so I'm calling it for a vote. All those in favor of tabling this for two weeks, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's three. I couldn't hear you, Mr. Pavone.
I, I mean, um, to me, I, I think there's going to be an uptick everywhere. So I, you know, I think with the county opening up more, restaurants opening up more, we're going to remain in a hot zone, probably for quite some time, in my opinion. So, I mean, if we want to wait two weeks to see what the data is, and and we make a decision on September twenty-second, I'm okay with that. But I don't think the data's going to change.
Okay, so it sounds like you're in favor of the motion.
Yeah, okay. So it's four, four once, but it passes. It's been reset. I would encourage all of us to talk to Dan about what the data means.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Dan, can you reach out to the county health department and quite possibly, you know, have somebody at the next council meeting to describe what a hotspot means?
Yes.
And in And in the meantime, you've been, you've been, as I understand it, you've been receiving this information from the health department on a weekly basis?
For about three weeks.
Can you please make sure when you receive it that it's disseminated to all of us so we can see what the trend is?
You bet.
Thank you very much, sir.
I think it would also be helpful. If we could decide when we reopen the park, whether we're opening basketball as well. Whether we are opening pavilion, whether we're opening the children's area, whether we're gonna open the bathrooms. Because they're not, I mean, they don't all have to go together. I mean, basketball's highly contagious sport. Maybe that's when we just leave, leave out of the loop for a while. Tennis is the least socially. Interactive sport. Maybe that one's, well, that one's okay anyway by the county. I, I, those are just some ideas to think about in that area. Okay, so we've tabled it and now we're at audience comments. Do we have any emailed questions and comments?
We have no email comments. We're responding to.
Can you turn on your microphone? Thanks.
We have no email comments. We're responding to a few. That have been sent in during the meeting, written comments. What about the adult exercise area at community park that goes along with the playground? What are the hours of testing tomorrow? The hours of testing are nine to four. One individual is going to call me to talk more about the utility admin building and the improvements that are being proposed there. Why are tennis courts, uh, being treated differently? And I think, Mayor, you just answered that. It's a little, uh, less socially, uh, in your face, so to speak. Uh, how many residents are participating this evening? We've had twenty-five attendees. We're up to twenty-six right now. Uh, and then we have a few hands raised here. So, uh, if we wanna start with, uh, Doreen Harling. Doreen, are you there? Are you main or self muted?
Perhaps we can go on to the next one and come back to her.
Nicole Kurchoff is the next. Nicole. She, she lowered her hand, so. Kathleen Booth.
Ms. Booth, could you, uh, unmute?
I am.
Can you hear me? Yes, could you give us your full, full name and address, please?
Sure, it's Kathleen Booth, seventy-five nineteen Clark Road. Um, how are we gonna notify other people in the town that aren't part of the Facebook group or, um, haven't signed up for email? Cause there's, you know, if this is really a hotspot, then I'm sure there's probably lots of people that don't even know that testing's happening tomorrow.
Dan, could you explain what we've done so far to advertise it?
She, she's right. We've, we've gone through the traditional methods so far. I think after tonight's discussion, if it's acceptable to council, we'll send out a code red tomorrow explaining that we are a hotspot and that. Testing is occurring from nine to four.
Can we send that out in the morning, first thing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for your question and please tell your neighbors and friends and people you know about the testing tomorrow.
Absolutely. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other?
Mr. Tim Dottry.
Mr. Dottry, could you state your name and address for the record?
First of all, can you hear me?
Yes, Tim.
Okay. Timothy Dottry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. For the COVID stuff, I did get tested when they were here before. I never was able to receive any results from that test, okay? That might have been one of those seventy-five thousand were dumped late by Quest. I don't know. Okay, I'll just let you know about that. Also, the charts you showed where the hot zone is indicated in our area. Be nice if we could disseminate that to people so that we do know that we're in a hot zone and we can see the changes from a week to week basis. I know that might not be something y'all choose to do, but I would love to see it personally, okay? So if you don't feel comfortable sending it to everybody. Number two, I mentioned this to both Val and Paul. I've had a pretty significant issue with trying to vote in our town. Well, in our elections and our, at our precinct in town, uh, two different instances, both March and in August. I had significant issues being able to vote, uh. Pretty big delays in, in the polls being open both in March and in August. I would love if y'all could follow up on that with. The supervisor of our elections to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I think in a general election, we would have a huge problem if that happens again. And like I said, that's happened twice in a row. And then on the third thing, okay, and this is something I've mentioned in the past. I've gotten letters about signs in my yard, okay? And, uh, it's getting worse and. I will say this, when the code enforcement officer comes up to me and discuss was, discuss with me that I shouldn't have signs in my yard. I got an issue with that because I really am clear about what I can and can't do with signs in my yard. And when people that are not particular, uh, supporters of the candidates I'm supporting on are using code enforcement. As a means to beat me up, I have an issue with that. Okay, so that's all I have to say about all those three things, okay?
Okay, I wanted to address one of them. Um, as far as the results, the June fifteenth, um, testing here. Was available to me in three days on the MyQuest app. I got, I got mine literally three days later. I don't know if you used the MyQuest lap, uh, app, but.
I did, I did, and I went through every avenue I possibly could to get the results, both with Quest and with Palm Beach County Department of Health. And I was unable to get any results from either one of them.
Okay. The second issue is the, the signs in the yard. My understanding is there is a limit to the amount, the number of political signs you can have in your yard. Although I don't know if I necessarily agree with that, it's, it's what our code says. But you know, I, I do not believe that we should ever use code enforcement as a means to eliminate political ideas. And I know I discussed that with you, Mr. Dottry, uh, earlier, whether it could go both ways. And we certainly are trying not to do that, so I appreciate your concern. And your other issue was a supervisor of elections. Uh, I did bring that comment to Mr. Clark's attention. I believe we're gonna be contacting the supervisor of elections to make sure this, this delay does not happen again. But I wanna encourage you also to mail in your vote, uh, because it's really the safest way to vote nowadays. And we had a seventy-eight percent vote turnout by mail, I believe. It was amazing. But thank you, Mr. Dottry. Anybody else wanna address Mr. Dotry's concerns? No? I don't see any hands. Uh, any other questions?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Murphy, Bill Murphy.
Mr. Murphy, could you state your name and address for the record?
Bill, you are self muted.
Hello?
Hello, Bill.
Am I the here? William Murphy, eighteen forty-one Evergreen Drive, Lake Clark Shores. I would hope that you would work on a plan for reopening, no matter what date it is, uh, and have the plan. Ready, so say shovel ready to open. That's all I have.
Thank you. We appreciate that, Bill, and we appreciate all the hard work you do in the parks. Any other questions, Mr. Clark?
Yes. Kristen Osment.
Could you state your name and, uh, address for the record, please?
Kristen, it says you're self muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Kristen Osment, eighteen twenty-seven Antigua Road.
Yeah, please tell us what you wanna share.
Okay, my question was, um, back to the playground issue, um, and the, the results you guys shared about the, um, COVID numbers and, and the area. Do they break that down by, um, age and what, you know, what percentage of those cases are actually children?
Mr. Clark, can you answer that?
So they do not break it down by age. The health department is very strict in what they will release. For fear that someone might be targeted one way or another. So all we get is a category of infected. And a number that says somewhere between twenty-four and sixty individuals, uh, have been infected within the last week.
Okay, so I, I mean, if, when we look at the numbers across the state of Florida in Palm Beach County, the percentage of children that are being affected is just unbelievably small. And I haven't seen too many adults playing on the playground. So. My, I mean, my question was, I know, I know you gentlemen are saying, what's two more weeks? But just as a mom of a toddler and an infant that has been stuck in the house since March, we're just ready to get back into the playground. And, um, so I would just urge you, um, just coming from a voice of, of a mother that. If, if we could make it happen as soon as possible, we would really appreciate that.
I appreciate your cons, I appreciate your concerns. Um, you know, statistically, that could be three households in. A population of sixty-five hundred that all, everybody in their family got sick and that's why our numbers are skewed. There's just no way of knowing what these numbers really mean. I've heard stories of two households equalling sixteen people infected and skewing an entire area. And obviously, none of those were children. And so I, I get the point. You want children to go out there. But we've tabled it for, for two weeks. However, we might tonight discuss more on, on that option. Uh, and I'm sorry, your playground, the playground's not available for children. I had five children here that I raised. They were all small and they all used the playground. Uh, and it was real important for them, so I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Maybe any other questions?
I wanna go back to Doreen. She still has her hand up.
Hi, Doreen, could you tell us your, uh, name and address?
Doreen, you're self muted.
Doesn't look like we're able to contact Doreen. Because you're self muted. Uh, any other questions?
That's him, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, Doreen, we, we aren't able to talk. We have to move on. Our status reports, I'd like to start with, um, the police chief who is here in council chambers. Hello, Chief, could you, can you give us your report?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, each of you have a copy of the report. I can break down a little bit. Uh, the good news is. It was a little slow for last month, which is great for the residents. Code violations, sixty-one code violations were issued, eighteen traffic citations were issued. The department handled seven crashes. We responded to assist fire rescue on eighteen medical calls. Uh, some were COVID related. Uh, we had one misdemeanor traffic arrest. We had one felony carrying a concealed firearm in the commission of a felony and possession of cocaine and marijuana. The Marine unit was out for a total of thirty-three hours. Uh, seven stops were initiated. Four for equipment checks, uh, zero on citations, five written warnings, and we assisted with, uh, one tow. And, um, our domestics are down, which are great. We did handle ten civil issues. Uh, sometimes neighbors don't get along. But overall, um. Everything is down, which is good. And also, you know, with UCRs, we're down a great percentage. So any questions, feel free. Any concerns or any questions?
Any concerns or questions of the chief? I, I see no hands from our council members, so it means you're doing a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next status report. It would be Charlie, if you don't mind, our town attorney.
Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, August is typically a slow month. And this year was, uh, no exception, so my report is very short. It is included in your packet and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have questions of our town attorney? Okay, there are no questions. Thank you again, Charlie. Um, we're also now gonna move to Dan Clark for his town report, his status report, excuse me.
My status report is, uh, in the packet. It's also available. As a handout on the presentation format, so if anybody wants to see it, they can, uh, open that handout. Tonight, the only thing I wanted to add is, uh, the lightning storm that occurred, I think it was Thursday, was pretty detrimental to the town. It looks like we lost power. The generator started. Uh, then we lost the generator control power, uh, control panel. And at the same time, we took out the switch that connects the generator to the building. So, right now, uh, we don't have an ability for standby power. The people will be out Thursday to repair the generator and get it back up and running, but it will probably take another couple of weeks to get the switch, uh, replaced. We're looking at, uh, making some adjustments, uh, adding some standby generator capabilities, uh, probably some plugs. So Damon can bring up one of the utility generators if we get into this situation again. Uh, that will be part of the repairs. So, um, we're, we're not quite perfect here in town like we have been in the past, but we've, we've got a plan of action. And you probably noticed that, um, the lightning also took out the air conditioning in this room. The gentleman fixed that why, uh, why we were here tonight and it started up again. So we're, we're grateful for that. And, uh, I understand that it fried a relay, uh, during that lightning storm, uh, in the AC unit. So, it was a nasty storm, took out a lot of stuff around town. Hope we don't have another one. And that concludes my comments.
Does anybody have, any council members have, um, questions of Mr. Clark? I have Mr. Freebold. Could you go ahead? Click on your microphone.
Okay, as we say, Dan's been handling me. Mr. Clark, I see here we're going to do the, um. garbage cart program rollout. So we've approved it this evening. We'll place the order. Do we have an idea on how long it will be till they're delivered?
She's targeting the second week in October.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question? Keith Smith?
Yes, can you hear me? Through the road improvement fund, Dan can talk a little more about it, but we got to computerize traffic signs, on speed signs, and they're going to be put on Westlake where we've had some complaints. And it's high technology. They'll flash red and blue if you're going over the speed limit. But the main thing that's really interesting is the technology where it will download the number of vehicles, the speed, the date, the time, and break it down in pies or charts and have more data for the town. So once we get them up, we should have monthly reports. And also, the information can be compiled to be put into online or in our goose letters that go out. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. I appreciate that. I remember looking at the technology for that that speedometer meter, whatever it was, at the last League of Cities meeting in Orlando last August. By the way, I do miss the League of City meetings. They were really great and that was a great displays they had. And I'm really glad we got them in a town because I know they were very expensive. So who knows for that? Okay, any other questions, Dan Clark? Seeing none? Oh, I just wanted to commend Dan Clark on the hard work for the rollout of the garbage cans and the debate we had about them. I think that was a very good deal we have for the town. It's going to make garbage look just nicer when people drive around and look at these garbage cans on Tuesday mornings and Fridays. And I appreciate Dan asking the Department of Health to come back and work with that issue as well. Okay. Now we're going to go on a base to council comments before we end our meeting tonight with everyone's stomach growling. Who would like to go first? Raise your hand. Bob Chahou, you have the floor.
There you go. We talked about the carts. I think we need to see what we can do about educating our neighbors that their current garbage cans are not going to be picked up, only the garbage that are in the new cans. So I think somehow or another, we need to do a flyer to make sure that they understand and appreciate it. You know, I don't care whether you Scotch tape it to the top of the lid to say, hey, look, these are the only ones, because I think there's going to be, I think, I think there's going to be some frustration if we don't teach our neighbors, you know, the new protocol. Just saying. And while I appreciate the vigilance on Westlake Drive for the speeders, it seems to me, Chief, we need to teach everybody that a red stop sign means stop. And then when our, what do you call it, citizens on patrol? When they don't stop and they just roll right through, that's not leading a good example to our residents. So stop means stop, everybody. Be safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Yes, go ahead.
To respond to President Pro Tem Chahou, our new contract has a mailer, a flyer going out in the mail to every home that will be affected by the change, explaining what the roles and responsibilities are. We'll see if we can't get enough extras to tape one to the top of every cart when the carts get distributed as well.
Thanks, Dan. I appreciate you staying on top of it.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, Albert, you want to add anything for your council comments?
Good idea. Tape that right to the top of the lid of the garbage can. Thank you for that, Bob.
It is a good idea. I mean, we're going to have a lot of people having a lot of questions. I mean, there's a lot of older folks that just put one bag out and every time. That's going to be an interesting predicament. But we'll have to work on that. Greg Freebold, do you have any comments?
In two weeks. Oh, am I back now, Mr. Clark? Because I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. Just, we'll see you all here on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor Paul Chahou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to add today. Appreciate everybody attending remotely.
Thank you. I appreciate that as well. I'm, I think it's been a busy month for Lake Clark Shores. I'm glad that tomorrow we will get some more information on whether this uptick is affecting us. And I'm glad that we have free COVID testing tomorrow. Please encourage all your friends and neighbors to get out and do it. It only helps. I continue to feel horrible for the people who are dying and still getting sick of all ages. And I'm really appreciative of you council members who have such diverse views, but also really care about the town, care about people. And I think that's important. I think these decisions about COVID should be made by town council members. We are the ones who can debate it and ultimately, we should always err on the side of safety. This is a once in a lifetime event, hopefully never happens again in our lifetime. I want to remind everybody out there that there's a reason for this. But please wear it, although I can't wear it right now. These do help. And they are mandatory. And hopefully, we won't have to wear them in the near future, but at the time being, we have to. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Moved by the, by Paul Chahou, seconded, I guess, by Robert Chahou or vice versa. All those in favor? Say aye. Okay.
Be safe, everybody.
Please be safe, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for piping into our virtual town hall meeting.